You stand and join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Greer, would you call, do the roll call?
Absolutely. Bear Carter?
Here.
Mr. Sins?
Here.
Mr. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
All right, if there are no additions or amendments to tonight's agenda session, work session agenda, then the agenda will stand as provided. Uh, can I get a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the September twenty-fifth council meeting?
So then. Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Epstein?
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
And then a motion to approve the minutes from the special council meeting on September twenty-seventh.
Motion to approve the special council meeting, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, that's the walk-up?
Yeah, the special.
I was like.
Yeah, that's the, that was the walkabout.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sure. Cause there was a call, I had a date notes in post there.
Did we get a second on that?
Second.
Mr. Sins?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Epstein?
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Epstein. I wasn't there for the whole thing, so it's better to.
You made it for the majority, like it wasn't, yeah.
All right, uh, let's move in, we have no discussion items tonight and we have no unfinished business, so we will move into new business, rules, committee update. Mr. Reed, would you like to?
Oh, sure, yes. Everybody should have this document which has council rules and procedures. This is our working document, uh, for the committee. We started out by, uh, building the, uh, infrastructure for the rules. It's kind of like building a house, you know, you start with a framing, uh, so that you know what you, what you want in the house, stuff like that. So this is, this is what the table of contents, substantial amount of work has gone into, to creating the table of contents, it's not done. Uh, we'll, we'll have more subheadings, uh, in it, um, and possibly new sections, depending on what the committee, uh, finds that they would like to include. I'll make a note here that the council rules and procedures, uh, include, really, it's in, in two sections and, one is the procedural part where it's basically meeting rules and, and, uh, procedures for handling business, in council, uh, the others, uh, section is kind of like about council and what the different parts are and how they function. And that would be the first part, like, uh, powers of council, the members, uh, meetings, you know, how you, how you schedule meeting, what a regular meeting is, emergency meeting, uh, thus and such. When you, when you get down to, uh, the conduct of a meeting, that's when the rules and procedure starts. This is what you, how you run a meeting and then how you handle the legislation that comes through in the discussion items, whatever. Uh, one important part of the legislator, legislative procedure will be how we position, uh, discussion, discussions and how we conduct them because we do it in a very non-standard way. So I'm telling you all this, so if you have comments or suggestions or some issue, uh, with the way, with what you see in the documents, then please feel free to, to comment on it or even come to a, one of our rules meeting, which have generally been at Monday on noon, at noon, on Monday at noon, and, uh, you know, participate in the discussions. You wouldn't be able to vote, uh, because you wouldn't be a member of the committee, but you'd have every other privilege that we can give you, uh, to express, you know, full participation in discussion, stuff like that. So, and, and I would really enjoy having that, that, uh, happen because the more input we get, the better we can make the rules that'll be, you know, when we finally get them to you, they'll be satisfactory and meet what you'd like to, like to see. So, um, having said all of that, I think that's probably enough commentary on it. The, um, go ahead.
I just want to add one thing, if you look at the table of contents and you say, gosh, that seems like something that's in the charter, we're not replacing what's in the charter and, and there'll probably be a link out to the charter section for anything that's specific to the charter.
Okay, let me, let me point out a couple of things that are a little different than what you might expect. For example, under boards and commissions, section five, if you want to go to where we actually have the content, after the table of contents, um, it's, it's, we're debating how to handle the committee rules, whether to mandate those for committees. When, when they're not mandated in the charter or in ordinance, then we'll mandate them for committees. And boards and commissions, I think that the personnel board of appeals doesn't have any description in the charter other than it has to exist, and, uh, so we might want to think how we want to handle that, and just mandate rules that we create, which will have a provision that they can amend them. So at least they'll, they can start with some rules. And if they're not comfortable with, with the rules that they get, the boilerplate rules, then they can amend them and change them to fit their needs. So, but it's important, I think, for committees to understand that they have, you know, procedure and things that they have to, you know, at least pay attention to or be aware of. So, um, you know, spend your idle, idle time thinking about that. The other different section that we've never talked before is section thirteen, suspending the rules. This is a pretty good description of how this section is supposed to work. In particular, um, that number two, under the characteristics, there's no rule protecting a minority of a particular size can be suspended in the face of a negative vote as large as the minority being protected. So what that means is that if you have, for, let's just apply it to council, if you have one person whose right is being protected, it only takes one, one no vote to kill any motion to suspend the rules. And that really could come into play at some point in time, I'm not saying it will, it never has, but, um, this is where it most often comes into play, where, where the whole assembly is trying to quash something, uh, that they shouldn't really be doing and the person objects to it and so they can't do it. But if you had a two, a two-vote person, a two-member person who, who council majority just wanted to control what they were able to do, uh, in terms of procedure, if both of those voted against suspending the rules, then you wouldn't be able to suspend the rules, you'd have to just go ahead with it. You could amend the rules, um, to change that provision, but you probably wouldn't want to. So the other part is in amending the rules, requires previous notice to amend the rules. In other words, you have to inform everyone that you intend to make a motion to amend the rules. Amendment is changing, is different from suspending, it would be more or less a permanent change. So previous notice means you just have to inform them that you intend to bring that motion and what the motion is, for five days before you bring it to, to a meeting, uh, to be made, and, uh, then you can go ahead and amend the rules by majority vote. So, as, as I mentioned these things, they're a little different concept than you dealt with before, or at least one, any that I've dealt in the four years I've been on council. So think about these things as you go forward, if you're concerned about them, and come to a, come to a rules committee meeting and we can discuss it, or bring it to council as a discussion item, we can discuss it there. Or you can wait till the whole rules package gets to council and we could discuss it there. So, you know, whatever your preference is. So I, I think that's the most, those are the unique things or maybe slightly different things that are in the rules up to this date. So.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Any comment concerns or?
Hey. Mr. Sharp? All right. Organizational assessment results.
Yeah, so I will take this one, Miss Lupton asked me to, uh, take this. I'll kind of do this as a full PMF update, uh, so hopefully we won't have to hit this on Monday. So the most, the last couple of PMF meetings have been really focused, as you guys are probably not surprised by, around the budget, um, and as part of that, the, there was an organizational assessment, I'll let Miss Sonnet jump in when I mess up here, an organizational assessment that was completed, um, report, I think it's been done a couple of times in the past, um, and provided some, here's where we think you guys need help, here's where we think you need additional positions. Uh, the biggest takeaways were that we still need a backup for Miss Sonnet. They actually recommend a two backups, I don't know if the budget will allow for that this year, but both a tax backup and more of a finance, uh, backup for Miss Sonnet. They also, uh, recommend, uh, a few other small changes that you guys could look at, the report has a nice summary. Right now, the biggest challenge we're facing, and you guys will hear about this, is kind of like preempting for the budget, so if you have a chance to read this, is when we created the water district, there were employees that were allocated to water and sewer that now that has been outsourced. Good news is the water district is not taking any of our employees. Bad news, the water district is not taking any of our employees. So it is our goal to retain all of our employees and move them over more to streets, more streets. In our park, which makes us a little overweighted in those areas. So for this year, um, the recommendation that you'll see coming out of PMF is that we need to retain our employees, we do not over-hire. If we lose anyone through attrition, I think there's an open position that we've decided not to fill. If we lose anyone through attrition, just to go ahead and reconsider if we want to fill back, fill that when that happens. Our water utility clerk will move to the administrator assistant position, which has been, was, been vacant for a while. That was a pre-planned, kind of like as they knew they were going to lose the water, uh, district employees, they moved, uh, the utility clerk over there. So this organizational assessment is worth the read. Unfortunately, you'll see that this year, twenty-four, is going to be a tighter year because we lose the water revenue before we get the housing revenue, we're trying to retain the employees, so the ability to fill some of the recommendations from the organizational assessment immediately appears to be not there, and instead, it looks like we should be waiting until we see how the water district revenues flesh out, how the revenue from the new homes starts to come in and make any assessments July or into twenty-five, that's the recommendation coming out of PMF, is that we don't, cause the biggest thing that everyone agreed to at PMF was the last thing we want to do is ever cut jobs. So we'd rather delay hiring and we know that puts stress on the staff as opposed to having to do the inverse and be sitting here a year from now and saying, oh, which jobs we have to, uh, push back on or cut. So take the time to read over that along with the budget conversation, I think it feeds well into that conversation. There are some other smaller pieces of the budget that we can get into, um, you know, in the coming weeks, but that's really, we spent a lot of time on it and they voted and I voted to move it to council, so it's ninety-nine point nine-nine percent ready. There's one or two small things, um, shift differential for the police, nothing that's more than ten thousand dollars, plus or minus. The good thing is, as Mr. Conley had pointed out to us in the past, we're in good shape. This isn't something that's putting us at any real risk, even with a very conservative revenue projection, we still well exceed the minimum fund analysis as recommended through Mr. Conley's presentation. So there's kind of that update. And while we're on the topic, we also talked about, uh, the mayor, uh, had asked us to consider evaluating things, uh, like stipends or other things to, for committee members or to help, uh, get more interest in committees and things of that nature, being on the PMF, it was a good place to send it to you first. The overwhelming feedback from the members of the PMF is that, to be honest, a small stipend isn't why people are doing this, they're doing it because it's civic duty and that they like to be a part of the village, they like to make an impact in the village. The biggest thing that they said is that they like that they're doing meaningful work on the PMF committee and other committees are the same way. So the idea that came out of the group, uh, that we shared with Miss Lupton is twofold. One, for kind of internally looking at the current committee members is if we can, around our holiday party, you know, instead of just having a council or staff holiday party, have like a pizza thing or something where we invite the families, they get to meet everyone, the kids get to meet the mayor, get to meet the city council members, so the people that, you know, that tour the police station, the, the people that are doing stuff already feel a little bit more appreciated because they said we'd much rather that than fifty bucks or whatever meeting, we'd much rather get together and have like a conversation, which from that sparked an idea of in January almost having a job fair where we invite all the members of the community and everyone has like a table and it's like, all right, this is the PMF committee, this is the DRV, this is the planning and zoning committee, come, for all the people that maybe don't quite understand how the committees work and they want to get involved, but they're kind of like scared to get involved, kind of have them come, allow them, invite, you know, everyone and say, hey, come out, we'll have a sign-up sheet if you're interested in committees and you can come, you can talk to members of the committees, you can talk to people and we have some very, uh, quality PMF members that said, you know, I think once they see that I can do it, they'll think that they can do it too, um, we have, we have a great group and they thought that would be a better way of getting, you know, kind of the casual participants that are maybe a little afraid as opposed to right now, we kind of do, at least what I do is, I call the same people I always call, like I text the same people I always text. So the goal here was more to try to find a way to get to the people we're not getting to, to see if they want to make an impact and publicize it, get them, go ahead, Mr. Reed.
I'm just thinking and kind of dovetail this in with Mr. Sins', uh, communications.
Yep.
Cause a lot of people, you know, you put on a party and a lot of people don't come. I mean, it's just, it's the nature of the beast. What about putting, having someone from each committee give a little talk, just a, you know, a three or four minute elevator, give an elevator talk about what their committee does and putting that online and saying, hey, check this out, see if you can help us.
Absolutely, yeah, we do, as we do this, like, as you do kind of the Mondays with the mayor, you know, like, I know you're hitting some of those committees, but maybe snippet those down to like one to two minute digestible things. Cause I think that, what, what our committee members, we have a newer committee member and her exact comment was like, she was looking for something to do a, after her kids, she became an empty nester and she's like, I don't really know where to go, so I just like applied to the mayor and, you know, she's like, I've been very happy with the committee, she's like, but I bet more people would do the same thing that are uninterested if we did it like, just like you're saying, like communicate what that is, educate people, do a little bit of a job fair. So that was our feedback on kind of what to do for interim, like the current members and for to continue to try to get a bench of new members because I think, um, like, like I said, I mean, whenever something comes up, they're always, they're always positioned open, I, people come and be like, yeah, I didn't want to mind, I'm like, I got the same five people in mind that I had in mind a year ago or the year before and they had the same feeling. So that's kind of our PMF update, a lot of good work, uh, we doubled up meetings in September. We may have one in October, but we don't, we, the budget is going to council now, so there might not be one in October because really until council ferries and digests the budget, that's kind of what PMF does.
Anything, Ms.?
No, perfect. I like.
I would like that on the minutes, um, Miss Sonnet said my report was perfect.
I, I like the idea of like the snippet to, like the one-two minute, like to say out, cause I had a lady stop me while she was walking down the street and she said, I really like Mondays with the mayor because it gets that information out and like things that I wouldn't think about. And she mentioned another area and I, I, she said, I heard this and I said, she said, I'm not sure where I heard it. I said, probably a Monday with the mayor and conversation.
All good stuff comes from.
I know, and I said, Mr. Sins helps to produce those.
And in line with that, we have a council, someone who's running for a council who is of a, of a younger generation and I think it's also important that we let folks know that these committees, you don't have to, you know, I mean, you don't have to be retired or, you know, kids out of the house, that this is for, if you're old enough to vote, you're old enough to be on a committee.
Well, and our community is changing too, we've got so many new people moving in that have not grown up here in Plain City and they, they want to get involved because they moved out here because they love the area. Well, this, I love the idea of the job fair, you know, do it in January, we just got to find a space that'd be big enough because I don't know if this would be big enough.
Hopefully it would be, right?
I hear we've got an event space.
It would not, that's a smaller. We have to think through that, this, Miss Lupton and, uh, the PMF committee, we will, we'll work on that in like November, but we just wanted to pull up the idea back to you guys because we were asked to kind of like just evaluate and think about it. Again, the, the, the first one, the kind of appreciation is more for the people that are on the committees and just to get to know everyone, and then the job fair is more of a open invite to the village to say, hey, and we talked, we, we talked about combining them, but then we're like, well, we're bringing the wrong people, like, we want people that are just interested in joining committees is the one thing, so we decided to separate them in December, January, right, because there's new turns in the new January.
We appreciate you, but we need you to work this, a booth.
Or I think like, do like.
It was their idea, they, they were super open to it, like it was, uh, it came out of the committee members' ideas, not.
Maybe even November, like before the holiday rush, I know November is going to be here fast, but set like that, like a committee member appreciation at the youth building or something, because that would be the, I think that would be the biggest space.
Yeah, I have a little bigger idea than that, uh, Jody. And in lieu of a stipend, I mean, if you were going to do a stipend, it would be, you know, probably not five dollars, probably some double-digit number above, at or above fifty dollars or something like that. So, so given how much that would cost and the fact that they don't want it, I think we could probably consider something that might cost the, cost the village a little money to do and I'm going to suggest maybe not during the holidays because it's so busy and crowded then, but in January, you know, the month you suggested, have a full blowout banquet for, for committee members and families, uh, maybe with, with a band, uh, a music, a live music entertainment at it. I mean, that's not going to cost you all that much money compared to what a stipend would cost, which we might do if they were open to it. So, and just for consideration.
Love, love the enthusiasm. The personal finance committee is in general always trying to not spend money and spend it on the village. Just so, so they're just, generally that group of people is always like, hey, let's, you know, we should, the money should go to the police and the staff, like, it, like, it, like, they're just generically, that's why you have them on personal finance because they're trying not to. And let's get through the budget conversation before we start thinking about spending a ton of money. You'll see that maybe you'll be like, you know what, saving ten thousand dollars isn't terrible.
Just a concept idea and I don't know if it would cost a thousand dollars, certainly not more than two thousand dollars to, to do some, a banquet like that for, for committee members, the number we have in family and council and staff. You know, everybody there, it's, it, it would just be, that's what they want, that's what they appreciate, that kind of recognition and fun, social get-together, so just consider, you know, for the future. On the other items on this revision report, this, um, I had a couple of questions.
On the organizational assessment?
Yes, on the organizational stuff. As far as the public works department, I, I'm fully approved putting those people in a different location, you know, to keep them on staff, but my question is, how much overstaffing are we going to be with wherever they're going?
So.
Is it going to be like one, two, or three, or whatever?
So, I'm going to say it and make sure I'm correct, there were two or three allocated to water and sewer? There are all five over there, and how many were allocated to streets before? Not, okay, so, so it's a bit of a, that's why I, I kind of say in my head like three, so there were no, there was no one allocated to streets and there were five allocated, so assuming that that's some sort of balance, right? Yeah, like there's, we'll say there's like two or two people, right?
Okay. Is there authorization for people in the streets? I mean, do we have?
So that's what the budget will do.
Positions authorized, council has to make those authorizations for the positions.
The budget will do that, by, by moving the.
So how many positions will it authorize in the budget?
Five angels, so it would be the five.
You're going to authorize five positions in the street, so.
And eliminate five for water. I, I, I want to be clear, these are new positions, these are just shifting, but.
Is five the right number or is it also parks?
Hold on, let's, let's, so Mr. Reed, I think, I think, I think your point, and what you're trying to get at is are we overstaffed?
Right.
The ability to purely evaluate that at this exact moment is tough. We believe, that's why through attrition, we will not just rehire immediately and that the open position that exists is not going to be filled.
That was my next question, Mr. Terry, thank you.
In addition to that, the parks is adding Madison Meadows Parks, these employees will now be responsible for that addition. We're adding more streets every day, they will be doing that. So there was an argument that we were like, if we stayed status quo, we would be adding facilities like the parks and streets, we would need more people. So, to, do I feel that we are one hundred percent accurately staffed in that department? Probably not, we're probably a little over for right now, but we will certainly find stuff for them to do. And as the year goes on, those positions are going to be evaluated through, like we said, through attrition or through, you know, hopefully we find stuff for them to do and, you know, but it's hard to tell today because we don't know how much work, because remember, the, the sewer plant itself was already being managed by Madison County and operated by Madison County. So it's, that work is not going away because it was never there. So the amount of work that's going away, it's hard to even say there was a ton of work going away.
Yeah, I, I trust the administration to analyze and assess what they need in that department. I was, I'm going to ask about the attrition, seems like a reasonable way to go if you're, if you think you have a bit too much, uh, in that position, but again, that's your decision if you know what's too much and what's too little. So I, I just wanted to hear, you know, what the, what the answers were. And I might encourage administration to encourage those, some of those people to get some training and for another position in the village if they wish to stay here and, you know, communicate them what that might be and what they could do and we have, we have, they have a benefit, do they not, for training or education or something like that? So push that envelope a little bit and it would be a benefit to everybody.
Okay, so we didn't have anybody, we didn't have anybody allocated to streets? So we had street, here's that, who is?
Their salary was.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's like, that's what I was trying to say, five people, I was like, I guess three and two.
Yeah, okay.
Their salary was water, sewer street.
That's okay.
Okay.
Cause I've seen guys working.
It's the same people, they do all, they do all the gigs, yeah.
Let me say, I, I went through the recommendations, I agree with all of them, which is very unusual to agree, except.
Always accept.
Except, there's always one, uh, but I don't, I'm not even sure about that because I was reading about the communications specialist and I asked for a job description and we don't have one. So, so before we fill that position, I kind of would like to see, we need to authorize it, I would assume. If we authorize it without a job description, then we shouldn't do it very well, so.
We are not implementing the recommendations or organizational assessment inside the twenty-four budget. If I were to, Miss Lupton isn't here, but I think I can speak for the PMF and for Miss Lupton a little bit. If she was going to prioritize the open positions, that would not be at the top and that would not be something that we would be considering at all in twenty-four and even probably twenty-five, I think the prioritization is still a backup in the finance department. The prioritization is still a backup in the finance department and then it's probably evaluating things like the engineers, the ability to work and things like that. Which it's a, it's a double, it's not much unlike the law director view. If you bring it in-house, then you gotta bring on a lot of special ones, things that have all the skill set, first having a form, form, uh, affirm. So I, I, I hear you on the not having a job description, I do not believe it is a pressing issue.
Have we actually created that position though?
Well, they didn't even say.
Position was like, I created, um, it was a hybrid position with a unitary assistant, it was like a. Admin assistant slash PIL.
So we haven't actually created a standalone position for that now anyway, so we wouldn't be able to have, I'd be, correspondingly, we wouldn't have a job description.
I just want to note then that it's a recommendation that we do have someone do this, this work, this described in this document. And I believe it also says someone is doing this work, uh, in this document, which is primarily website maintenance, I believe. Somebody's doing that, correct? So, and his recommendation is, I think, that we fill this position or hire a contract company. To take care of this for us, I, I would always lean toward getting a contract company if, because hiring an IT staff, which is what you would start, be starting doing. Is hiring a big bowl of cheese, you know, it would just grow and grow and the contract companies can do this work really fast and easily. Cause they usually know what they're doing, so those are my comments on the communication specialists, I think we need this work to be done. Obviously we do, because there's been a lot of improvement and a lot of positive feedback, I think, on the website especially. I would just like to know what else the communication specialist would do. And, and how we're gonna meet the need that's being filled now, is it gonna be the same way, you think, we're just gonna keep doing it the same way?
As of right now, I don't know. A lot of people wear different hats and the, the person handling the website handles other things, um. Justin over here handles many different things, we, we all handle, it's kind of like. They sit finance person and help, they're, I'm not a hundred percent that I meet somebody every day, all day. Even just our income tax, and so we're talking about splitting our hybrid position there, I mean, we're all willing to sacrifice work a little bit more, do things out of our job description. To help out, reduce costs, and so, and that's, you know, I don't know if we'll ever get there to full time, but I, I just don't see that being. And that's why I think Ms. Leptin is feeling the same way.
Yeah, that, that was clearly in the recommendation, that wasn't going to be, that's not something for twenty twenty four, that was clearly recommended in this.
Okay, yeah, I trust the administration to work it out, they've worked it out and are giving good results. Uh, so that's good, now, I, you brought up your assistant position and now, I've been pushing, I've been mentioning this, not pushing really. Uh, but for, for years here, that you need help in your department and you need backup, especially in your department. I know we have, you told me that you have somebody can do payroll, for example, I don't know how much practice they get at it. Or if they do it every time now or how that works, but I'm particularly still concerned. Uh, don't minimize that, that importance of that position, your backup and your assistant. To the overall operation of, of the village.
Additional finance, payroll, tax, resource is the number one priority coming out of PNF. It's just the timing on when we have.
Which is also in this write-up, it also says, says this very clearly in this write-up.
It's the number one.
The number one priority.
Yeah, I was taking it very seriously, I mean.
Alright, thank you. No, appreciate it, thank you. That's all my comments on this.
Alright, any other discussion, questions on this, alright, let's move on to policy and procedure management.
I was like, this one, yeah.
To be completely honest, um, there doesn't need to be a lot of discussion, obviously, council, etc., you can't. This left in, just wanted to put this as by a council, so you guys can see it, this is really, well, first of all, the outline is a draft still. There are certain sections that may be added, there may be certain sections that are taken away, the point of this tonight though is just so you guys could see. What has been passed enactment date, just a, a general, you have, you have any questions?
No, I just have, I'm sorry, um, these, these are called administrative orders appropriately.
It's a draft, so this is, it's.
You don't have these actually yet?
No, 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 so if it doesn't have anything in the adoption and enactment column, that means that they are not in Britain, um. They are, you know, this is kind of timeline for.
Just, just for your information, just my position on administrative orders, those do not require council approval. Those are strictly administrative orders that Haley would issue or her advisors and council. Uh, would, would come up with for her administrative things, I certainly would appreciate reading them and seeing what you're doing. On that point, but from, but from my standpoint, I'm more concerned about council policies, okay, those are council business. And I appreciate what you've done here and probably I'll have to look at this and see what I know and what I don't know. That, that's on here and make sure I, I cover some of this stuff, but thank you for, for going this direction and kind of organizing and putting things. In place that we need, so thank you.
Thank you, and our last new business topic is note, is the note for Notman Road stormwater update.
So. You probably all heard about this kind of being longstanding and, uh. And the time we got started and we submitted our first, um, pay up to a WDA to reverse the contractor. It was brought to our attention at that time, since we have joined the district, we have allocated our assets to the district. So therefore, the storm water piece of the Notman Road project, OWDA will not finance. Because we, as a village, do not have a, a resource to pay that particular debt back. So we've been struggling to figure out the best way to handle this and I've worked with OWDA. Um, if we can do a short term financing for the five hundred thousand dollars for this particular piece of the project. Um, we can get our contractor paid and then we can then in turn start a stormwater utility process through council, getting. Study done to get the fee put in place, get the asset, the resource. And then OWDA will then loan us the money next year, roughly about this time to, um, have a longer term debt. And then the stormwater pay, that fee will pay that. So that's what this is about.
So why, so, and if it may be just a revenue to the, understanding the district and everything. In the future, would this be something that we would handle or the district would handle directly?
We, we agree to handle all stormwater, so then you kind of go back to your like staffing.
So we will do stormwater.
Stormwater, so once we get this fee put in place, then possibly one or two of our staff members can be paid out of stormwater, because they're gonna be handling that. You know, with the streets and stuff like that.
And our sewer impact fees, that's what we're talking about, becoming storm.
We, we would address that, no, we do not, um, I, I believe Ms. Leptin wanted to retain those fees to help, um, with future development, so.
Of sewer?
Of sewer lines.
Not of storm. So basically just, we're a floating, we're a floating a, a loan for about a year until OW, OWDA can come in and back.
And so once we have that revenue put in place, that we have the revenue to support that debt, OWDA can give us a little percent in construction loan and then go from there. That, that's the only other, you know, five hundred thousand dollars out of pocket.
No, thanks, where do we get this short term loan through?
We kind of, what we did, which is the recent note purchase, the note issue, we're gonna do that, the five hundred thousand dollars for roughly probably four percent.
Does that do that one bank now, with that, um, state, uh, or?
No, no, this is like the capital market. I mean, the four percent wasn't, that we received on the one million, it wasn't horrible, I mean, so especially in today's market. I do believe with OWDA will get cheaper, I mean, this loan that we have, the Notman Road. It was like two point six five, which is pretty darn good, so.
For me, it sounds like you're making the best of a bad situation and it's not really all that different than what we were already, we'd already committed to this money, we've already committed to this project. All of this was unknown, it's just how we're mechanically taking care of it slightly different. To me, I think you guys are making the best.
Majority of the Notman Road project, that piece, they're gonna take that debt.
The, the district, the, all the sewer side.
Is the loan thing, anything council has to vote on?
Yeah, council, they'll be in chat on council Monday night.
Okay, now, is this, I, I assume then it would be reflected, and I'd be able to be identified in the budget for twenty twenty four. I mean, I'll be able to see where, where, when it comes in and where it's, cost, what it's costing and stuff like that.
In twenty twenty three, you're.
It's a supplement, yeah.
For the money coming in to be sent out to the contractor.
Cool, thank you.
Soccer or contractor to, they're doing the work out there, so, and.
Again, just to clarify, we were already budgeted to pay this in twenty twenty three, it's just how we're.
It's just where the money's coming from, right?
So it's not like a new five hundred thousand dollar shit.
Thank you for managing this, Renee.
This project has been very, yeah. Paying so many more projects, so that's all I have. On, on council's agenda, you'll see the, what we just kind of went through for the one million is to pay five hundred thousand now. But, honestly, we will possibly pursuing stormwater. But that's Ms. Leptin's deal, that's her line, so pass the buck.
And everyone, I don't know if everyone knows, she's at a conference, the ICMA.
Alright, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep, motion to, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Second.